Good evening. At this time, I'd like to call our regular scheduled meeting to order, January the 4th, 2016, and welcome. We have the invocation, we have Vice Chair Mr. Lohman for invocation, then the Pledge of Allegiance.
If everyone would bow with me, please. Heavenly Father, we do thank you for the start of a new year. And Lord, we just ask that as we make decisions as commissioners, that we would make decisions that would be good for our county and for our citizens. Just direct us during tonight and let us work together as a body of commissioners. Let us not be self-centered, but let us focus on what the county needs and guide us and direct us into that direction. These things I pray in Christ's name. Amen.
At this time, you should have the agenda in front of you. I entertain a motion for approval or any adjustments to the agenda?
I move we approve it for today.
Second.
I have a motion, Commissioner Dennis, and a second by Commissioner Burleson. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Number one, our presentation regarding the Stanley County's 175th Anniversary Celebration. Ms. Bramlett, welcome.
I'm Pat Bramlett, and I want to thank you for allowing us to come and present to you tonight. And in case the board doesn't know, your Chairman, Scott Eifert, has helped us with the planning for this 175th Anniversary, so we appreciate that, Scott.
Yes, ma'am.
Wanted to start off by telling you a little bit about how the 175th Anniversary Celebration evolved. The Stanley County Historical Society wanted to make sure that citizens of Stanley County were aware of the historic milestone in the county's history when on January the 11th, 1841, the North Carolina General Assembly split Montgomery County and Stanley County was formed. Representatives from the various museums in Stanley County met in late August to consider the possibility of planning a 175th Anniversary Celebration. Following that initial meeting, contact information for all of Stanley County's municipalities was obtained from the county manager's office. Everyone on that list was contacted and invited to attend a meeting in September. At the September meeting, there was much discussion about the kinds of programs and events that might be of interest to the people of Stanley County. Representatives from the different areas of the county discussed how their communities might showcase some part of their history. Everyone was encouraged to include other people who might have an interest in participating. With the permission of County Manager Andy Lucas and the help of graphic designer Meredith Smith, the new Stanley County logo was adapted for use during the 175th Anniversary Observance. So be sure to look on, I believe, on the papers that you received, you can see that we have started using that logo. On January the 11th, 2016, Stanley County will begin a year-long observance of the county's 175th Anniversary. Tonight, I want to tell you about the programs and events that are already being planned. Many of the people who are organizing the different programs and events are here with me tonight. I would like for them to stand and be recognized as I tell you just a little bit about their plans. Due to other commitments, some of the people who have been working with us were unable to be here tonight. The 175th Celebration will begin on Monday, January the 11th, at 6:30 PM with an opportunity to meet John Stanley, the man for whom Stanley County was named. The program, John Stanley Live and in Person, will be held in Albemarle, the county seat of Stanley County. Since January the 11th, 2016, is the 175th Anniversary of the establishing of Stanley County. The program will begin with a birthday party for Stanley County in the Fellowship Center of Central United Methodist Church. This program is being planned by Chris and Pat Bramlett, Miriam and Jack Cranford, and Janet Pyatt, representing the Stanley County Historical Society and the Stanley County Museum. On Monday, February the 29th, Ken Ringler, Janice Hearn-Mitschner, Lydia Hearn-Morgan, and Ruth Goodwin will share memories of our beginnings, the story of how and why Albemarle became the county seat of Stanley County. Others working on this event planned by the City of Albemarle are Christina Alphen, Assistant City Manager, and Mark Donham, Director of Economic Development. Christina, Mark, and Chris Bramlett are all attending an Albemarle City Council meeting and were unable to be here. Faith Davis with the Stanley County Public Library is planning an event on Monday, March the 14th. For that event, the public will be encouraged to be part of a show and tell program, back down memory lane. Participants will have an opportunity to share brief stories or show interesting items related to the history of Stanley County. Faith already has a very nice display set up at the library, including a variety of books related to Stanley County or books by Stanley County authors. The display also includes other items related to the 175th Observance. This exhibit will change over time, so stop by the library to see what Faith is doing. On Thursday, March the 31st, the library will present another program. This will include music and storytelling as we learn about the Civilian Conservation Corps, CCC Boys, FDR's program to build young men while building Stanley County. In addition to the program on March 31st, Ashley Flair and Paul Morrison, who work at Stanley County Library, are gathering items related to the two CCC camps that were located in Stanley County, and these will be on display. John Young has also helped a great deal by providing some additional information on the CCC camps. On Saturday, April the 2nd, the DAR, Genealogical Society, Stanley County Historical Society, and other groups will offer the annual Heritage Workshop, being planned under the leadership of Wanda Gant and Zelma Udi. This day-long workshop will be held at First Baptist Church in Albemarle. On Saturday, May the 14th, John Young and Ron Anundson with Marah Mountain State Park are planning a number of short hikes to various parts of Marah Mountain, not often visited by the public. In addition, Joyce Lambert will be at the Crohn Home Site to share stories about Dr. Crohn, legendary doctor of Stanley County. Brooks and Jane Barnhart, Annabelle Spate, and Joan Branch are working on an event being planned by Oakboro, Red Cross, and the Oakboro Regional Museum, which will take place on Saturday, June the 4th. The program will start at the Oakboro Presbyterian Church where attendees will learn about the Whitley Mill of Stanley County, last in the line of our disappearing grist mills. This program will conclude with a visit to the Whitley Mill. Les Young, Adelaide McNeil, and Janet Coulson from the Norwood and Cottonville area are working on the July Program, which will take place on multiple dates in multiple locations, all of which are yet to be determined. These programs will address center and Tyson Townships during the 19th century and will focus on schools, churches, transportation, et cetera. On Sunday, August the 28th, Calvin and Rebecca Gaddy and Tate Daniels will host a program, Bylesville, The Early Days, to be held at the New London Fire Station. Next stop Meisenheimer is the topic of the Sunday, September the 18th event. Jonathan Hutchinson, Viper University Archivist, Mike Ryman, and Pam Humphries of the Village of Meisenheimer, and Kay and Richard Cosgrove have plans to include information about the Beringer Gold Mine, Meisenheimer Springs, Gladstone Railroad and Industry, and Mitchell School during the time period from 1841 to 1916. Attendees will also have an opportunity to visit the Gladstone Site. A special display, Stanfield Through the Years, will be part of the Stanfield Festival to be held in Pete Hinckley Park on Saturday, October the 22nd. Tara Tarleton and Bridget Hales, Town Administrator, are coordinating this event. Churches have played an important role in the history of Stanley County, so it is fitting that we conclude the year's observance with a program on the early churches of Western Stanley. Bob Rimsberg and Scott Eifert of Locust are working on this event. It is possible that other events will be added to the schedule as the year progresses. The schedule will always be updated as more information becomes available. We hope that you will listen to WSPC 1010 and WZKY 1580 and check the Stanley News and Press prior to each event to learn more details about our programs. If you have any, well, we hope that you and your families will join us throughout 2016 and celebrate our 175th Anniversary with us and learn more about Stanley County history. And if you have any questions, we have a lot of people here who can help answer them. So thank you again, and appreciate your letting us be here.
Can I make a comment if that's okay?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I really like this, I'm pretty excited about it, especially how you've brought together folks from all around Stanley County. And throughout the year, we as commissioners should perhaps help promote this and encourage the citizens from the different municipalities to not only learn about theirs, but to visit other parts of the county that they don't normally get to.
That's exactly what we're hoping for. Thank you.
Any more questions for Pat? Pat, we certainly appreciate your input and everything you're doing for the 175th Anniversary, and I look forward to Monday night to meeting John Stanley for the first time.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate all these people who are here tonight and the work that they're doing.
Thank you very much, we appreciate you guys and all your hard work. At this time, the Quarter Cent Sales Tax Update, our presenter is Commissioner Shudo.
Now is crunch time. You know, we, I appreciate, gonna give you all an update and just tell you where we're going real quick with the Quarter Cent Sales Tax. Commissioner Eifert's been on the trail, he's been to Red Cross, Stanfield, Locust, and also to Richfield, and I was up there in Richfield with him, and, you know, Richfield seems to want to join Stanfield in passing a resolution to support the Quarter Cent Sales Tax. For those of y'all not familiar with it, on the March referendum, there's a ballot, there's gonna be a referendum for a Quarter Cent Sales Tax Increase if the citizens choose to do so. That money is earmarked to go to education, to Stanley Community College, and to the Board of Education. And just to let you know, everyone gets freaked out with tax, 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 but what it is, is one penny for every four dollars you spend. And the nice thing about that tax, it helps alleviate the burden from property tax owners if it is passed, because everyone who purchases stuff in Stanley County, and there are some exemptions like pharmaceuticals and stuff like that, but people who purchase things in Stanley County will help contribute to our tax base in education. And that includes people coming from out of town, you know, and driving through and visiting, they'll contribute to our tax base. Stanley County residents, we contribute to the other counties' tax base with that extra Quarter Cent Sales Tax, our surrounding counties pretty much all have that. And then, what's interesting, I went to Norwood, spoke to Norwood, I was on the agenda representing the commissioners, I was, really I was kind of disappointed when after I spoke, that Commissioner Burleson was there, he got up and spoke and pretty much contradicted everything I said. And, you know, I think we should move forward, if you don't support it, you need to just try not to sabotage it if possible. I'll be leaving the meeting early tonight, I'm on the agenda with the City of Albemarle, you know, to talk to them about the Quarter Cent Sales Tax. January 11th, I'll be at the Village of Meisenheimer, and I'm on their agenda. January the 12th, I'm gonna be speaking at the Town of Bayton. And what I learned the last time, well, you just gotta get, you just gotta spread the word the best you can. You know, we can advertise all we want, but the problem we have is that if people don't listen, and this we found last time we tried to do the Quarter Cent Sales Tax, if people don't listen to the Stanley News and Press, I mean, listen to the local radio station, they don't read the Stanley News and Press, it's hard to get the word to them, other than by word of mouth and by different community leaders just spreading the word to try to get this passed. Also, I'm going beyond just the municipalities, you know, at the February School Board Meeting, I'll be talking about it then, hoping to get support from, you know, the school board is behind it, but hopefully, you know, just having on the agenda and talking about, there's been a lot of people there that they'll get behind it. Then I'm spreading out beyond just, you know, the government entities. I talked to Kathy, today I talked to, Kathy at the Chamber of Commerce, and they're possibly gonna spread the word out for us. I talked to Dr. Hayes, Dr. Hayes is leaving this week to a new position in Texas, but before that, she's gonna, she gave me some, you know, the person to contact, so they're gonna spread the word to all the employees at the Stanley Community College, gonna try to get the word to all the employees at the school board. And January 25th, the fire chiefs have a meeting, and I'm gonna try to get on their agenda to talk to the different fire chiefs. I mean, what I'm doing is I'm just trying to get around and get everywhere I can to get people to start spreading the word. The last time, one of the comments people got, when people came out of the polls, it's like they were not aware of it going in, so of course, they saw a thing for tax and they voted it down, so that's where I'm at, folks, and like I said, I may have to leave early to go to the town council meeting. And also, if any of y'all are in civic clubs and would like me or one of the commissioners to come out, we'll be glad to and appreciate, like I said, some of y'all been out there, I know, promoting and stuff like that, too, so appreciate y'all doing. We just gotta get the word out to everywhere we can. I was thinking even perhaps the Republican Party and the Democratic Party gonna outreach to them to see if they could spread the word to the, because, you know, those folks, you have a lot of people who are your core voters that'll go out and vote. And, you know, because if y'all have been reading the newspaper and listening to the radio station, the one thing we need is dollars for education in Stanley County to kind of help with curriculum and with aging facilities and trying to keep us competitive with our neighbors.
Thank Commissioner Shudo, I appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Got a few words since my name was mentioned, just to clarify what happened in Norwood, I'd like to give you the full story there. I was asked to attend that meeting by the town council members, several of them, in Norwood, to give them some additional information as to the reason myself and perhaps the reason Commissioner McIntyre voted against the resolution, and why we did not support Quarter Cent Sales Commissioner McIntyre, two years ago, supported the previous Quarter Cent Sales Tax to, the use of it was gonna be to pay for the current radio system that is being put into place right now. I campaigned saying I would support the previous Quarter Cent Sales Tax, and I did. This time around, however, I cannot support it. The use of those additional dollars has not been stated, it just says, well, we're gonna give it to education. Well, I don't know what that means, just spending more money doesn't solve our problems. Furthermore, it does not put a halt on closing our community schools. I don't want to close community schools and pay more taxes. A lot of folks in Stanley County, it's my belief that the majority of the folks in Stanley County don't want to do that. If it's gonna be put to a good use, then perhaps I could support it, such as putting something toward public safety, expanding the radio system, putting in a new system, which we did. Then we were told that, you know, we were gonna have a hard time paying for it. Yeah, our last budget, it was tight to make ends meet, but we were able to do that. Before we start beating our chest and wanting to raise everyone's taxes, Commissioner Shudo has said multiple times he wants to raise property taxes, and certainly has sat here tonight, said that he supports this, and is going around to all the local municipalities wanting to support it. So I, for one, would like to find some cuts in the budget where we can make up on other items. So construction has continued to increase in the county, and our tax base is continuing to expand as the economy improves, and so we have more dollars coming in, and I believe we're gonna make it without supporting raising taxes. So that was the information I gave to the folks in Norwood, and I was asked to be there, didn't show up to sabotage anything, as Commissioner Shudo stated, so just want to get the facts straight and let you all know, and folks that will be listening to this meeting at a later time, the facts.
Thanks, sir.
Yes, sir.
This is not the time and the place to do stuff we're doing here tonight, and this board voted five to two in favor of the Quarter Cent Sales Tax, and we as commissioners, if you can't support it, you need to go out and you say whatever you want to as an individual, but do not address it as a commissioner.
Thanks, sir. Next is our Stanley County Utilities, and our presenter is Ms. Donna Davis.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I thank you for the opportunity to present these three items to you this evening. All three items are awards of contracts for construction, and I'd like to start with number one, which is item 3A on your agenda, the award of the Alonzo Road Master Meter and Vault Project Construction Contract. Stanley County Utilities received bids on December 18th, and what we'd like to do is request authorization to award this contract to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, who was RDR Incorporated of Locust, North Carolina, and authorize the associated project ordinance and budget amendment.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Davis? All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the bid to RDR Incorporated in the amount of $48,715.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Lohman and a second by Commissioner Dennis. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, next on the agenda is item 3B, which is the award of the Cottonville Waterline Relocation Project Construction Contract. The Cottonville Waterline would have to be relocated in association with a DOT Bridge replacement on Cottonville Road. As a result of the work that's being done, DOT will reimburse us for the construction and the associated cost of relocating this waterline. We request this evening that the contract be awarded to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, which is SKC Incorporated of Seagrove, North Carolina, pending the agreement from NCDOT. We're still waiting for a written agreement that formalizes their reimbursement to us, and as soon as that is, we receive that, we'd like to move forward with this contract.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the agenda item.
Second.
I have a motion that we approve by Commissioner McIntyre and a second by Commissioner Lauder. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
And at this time, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request a meeting of the Greater Bayton Water and Sewer District, please.
Yes, ma'am, I'd entertain a motion that we recess our meeting and go into the Greater Bayton Water and Sewer District at this time. Have a motion, a second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? We are now in the Greater Bayton Water and Sewer District.
Mr. Director, Chair, I would like to recommend to the board authorization to award the Part B contract for the eastern part of the Town of Bayton, the complete installation of a new system to the lowest responsible responsive bidder, which in this case was Holly Construction Company of West Kinley, North Carolina, for the Part B project. And this would be the second of the two projects to completely renovate the Bayton Water System.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve. I have a second by Commissioner McIntyre. Any more questions?
One question, Ms. Davis.
Yes, sir.
Holly Construction Company. I'm asking, I guess, will this be a bonded company, or will there be a bond?
All of our construction is done under bond.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. At this time, I'd entertain a motion that we close the Greater Bayton Water and Sewer District meeting. I got them all over the place, Tyler, you just had to pick and choose. All those in favor say aye.
Hi. Excuse the Chairman Eifert, so can I, I'm gonna excuse myself and go to the Albemarle meeting.
Okay. All right, thank you, sir. All right, let me catch up here just for a second, hold on. All right, we are now Economic Development Commission reappointments, and our presenter is Commissioner Jan Lauder.
Thank you, Chairman Eifert. We've received our packets and we have the volunteer applications of those interested in serving on the EDC Board. Wes Morgan has served on the EDC Board, and he has expressed an interest to be reappointed. Conversations were held with Paul Stratus, the EDC Director, Commissioner Lohman, and myself, and I so moved that we reappoint to the EDC Board for a two-year term, Mr. Wes Morgan, to serve in the Northern District.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you.
At this time, we, the Board's Annual Strategic Planning, and our presenter is County Manager Andy Lucas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. For the past seven years, the Board's held a local planning retreat as a kickoff to the budget process for the next fiscal year. It's recommended that the Board hold that financial planning retreat again this fiscal year. Some possible dates that we've thrown out there are February 12th and February 19th, and so we're asking the Board, one, to consider holding that retreat, two, to determine the need for a facilitator and approve that, and then consider a date for that retreat. I'll be happy to answer any questions, and we would likely do it at the airport, since that facility seems to work very well for us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
What date did we have last year? Was it not, we had some conflicts and it was kind of pushed back later, wasn't it?
Yeah, I can't, it was in February, I know.
Okay, it just seemed like it was a little earlier. I'm fine with either dates for the retreat.
Mr. Chairman, I'm okay with either date. I would prefer the 19th, but either date would be okay. And I would hope that we would obtain this facilitator, as we have before.
Chairman Eifert.
Yes, ma'am.
I will have a conflict on February the 19th.
Okay. The 12th good with everybody?
It's okay.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's Lincoln's birthday, is that okay, anybody?
If you wanted to push it back, that's the only problem, is to just push it back on calendar. But 12th, 12th. Mr. Chair, I would say the 12th would be good, sounds like for the entire Board, and I know Commissioner McIntyre stated that he would like a facilitator, and I agree, I do think we need a facilitator.
Okay. The 12th?
Question.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
An outside facilitator, is that what you're suggesting? Thank you.
I think the one last year did a fantastic job.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I guess I'm gonna have to disagree with everyone else. I was gonna tell Commissioner McIntyre, before everyone kind of jumped on, I really thought that, you know, last year, I kind of went along with it since it was my first year, but I really think that we could talk amongst ourselves, along with Andy's help. I know several of you may disagree with me, but I'm not sure how much we paid for that facilitator, but I just felt like she wasn't quite familiar with everything that we've got going on in Stanley County, and sometimes getting in the middle of our conversation was... was, I didn't like that too much, but.
Mister Chairman, we can control that a little bit. I think what we found out in the past, and Andy has done this on his own before, kind of puts him in a position where when we start arguing or whatever, that he has to referee, and that's not a good position for the county manager to be in, and this is what the facilitator's better equipped to do. But I think as far as, I agree with what you said about sometimes you wonder if they know what we're doing, but the main thing is for them to kind of control the meeting and lead us in a direction, so I understand where you're coming from, and we tried it without the facilitator, and we just found out it worked better with the facilitator.
Yes, sir. Do I need a motion for the date and the facilitator?
That would be good. I think you've got a motion, I think Tony made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Tony. Okay, I have a motion for the February the 12th and a facilitator, and a second for Commissioner Lohan. Any more discussion?
I would like, and I agree with you, you know, we could do it, and we've had it, and I'm like, Commissioner McIntyre, it does put Andy in a bad, bad, if we get to arguing over stuff, and our job is for her to pull the information out of us that we want, that we need to put up her on that board, and I just think the facilitator works real well.
I understand that, I guess, there were several times that I watched several other members of this board get into a dialogue that we needed to have, and it was kind of getting cut off too soon, but just my opinion, but I can go along with.
Chairman Evert?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd suggest that the best thing we do is, it's within our power, not to waste our time and argue among ourselves, but to tend to the business people elected us to do.
Thank you, ma'am. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? At this time, you should have the consent agenda in front of you. Yes, sir.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Dennis to approve.
Second.
And a second by Vice Chair Lohan. Any more discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? No one signed up for a public comment, and so we'll go into board's comments and announcements, and I'll start with you, Commissioner Dennis.
No comments, Chair.
Okay. Yes, no one signed up, do I have anybody that would like to make a public comment at this time? Okay, thank you, thank you, Commissioner McIntyre. Vice Chair Lohan?
I always like to bring positive news about the economy, and Andy was good enough to get this information to me at my request, it was about home building permits, and this was through November 30th, and I'm sure there's been a number of permits issued since November 30th. But as of November 30th, 2015, this is new home permit for Stanley County, we issued 136 for a total value of a little over $24 million. And the prior year, we only issued 87 with a total value of $12 million. So, we almost, we did double the value of permits issued, which is a sign that our building economy is returning to much better times, which puts our subcontractors, our heating and air conditioning contractors, our building supply houses, everything in the economy, in my opinion, revolves around building, and our building numbers have had a big increase during 2015.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Louder. Commissioner McIntyre? Commissioner Burleson?
Hope everyone has a prosperous 2016.
Thank you, sir. At this time, we need to go into closed session to discuss personnel issue in accordance with General Statute 143-31811A6. Do I have a motion we?
Second.
Motion and a second, all those in favor say aye, or we are now in closed session.